Great. Thank you.
I'll keep you under.
So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the May 27 meeting of the zoning board of adjustment. I'm Jayman Cara, ZBA Chair. Directly to my right is Josh Neely, Vice Chair. After that, J.P. Boucher, Member. And across the table, Robert Shaw, Member, and alternate Joseph Patry. Since we have only four full members of the Board here this evening, Mr. Patry will be voting on all the cases. So, just very briefly, in terms of order of business, so we have two applications for us this evening. One's for a special exception, and one is for variance. So, a special exception is a use that's allowed under the ordinance where certain criteria are met. A variance is a request to deviate from the requirements of the ordinance. And the zoning board can only grant a variance under certain conditions. So, first, it must be within the spirit of the ordinance. It can't be contrary to public interest. Substantial justice has to be done, so granting the variance has to result in substantial justice. There can't be any diminution of surrounding property values. And owing to some special condition in the property, denial of variance would result in an unnecessary hardship to the owner. So, just in terms of procedure, each of the applicants, you have, I'm going to read the case into the record, and then you'll have 15 minutes to present your case to the Board. So, just kind of describing what it is you're looking to do and why you meet the criteria. We will ask you to state your name and address for the record. Normally, I would go through the back and forth that kind of happens with people who speak in favor or opposition, but seeing as there's no one else here, we won't be doing that. We do, however, have a couple of letters. I'll read those in the record, and I would, you know, provide each of you an opportunity to rebut those if you wished. Once we're done, we'll close the public hearing, and then on each case, and then the Board deliberates. And then after deliberation, typically, there will be a motion to either approve, to deny, or to continue it to a future meeting. So, with that, if there, I don't think there's any questions from any of the Board, I'm going to call the roll. Mr. Neely?
Present.
Mr. Boucher?
Present.
Mr. Shaw?
Present.
Mr. Patry?
Present.
And I will also note that to my left is Carter Fock, Deputy Planning Manager, and some of you may have had a chance to work with Mr. Fock. So, with that, I'm going to read the first case into the record. Brandon Rayome, I believe, 36 Elgin Street, requesting a special exception from land use code 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory dwelling unit, also known as an in-law apartment, in the basement of an existing home that's in the RA zone in Ward 7. So, feel free to come up to the microphone. Again, just state your name and address.
Brandon Rayome, in 36 Elgin Street in Nashua. And, as he stated, I'm looking to make an ADU out of my basement of my current home. I'm not too sure how this works.
Maybe if you'd like, just kind of describe what your plan is in terms of creating the apartment?
Yeah, so, out of my existing basement, I want to make a full bedroom and make it fully living for a person to make it as their primary residence. And we have the extra parking, so it all fits them. They would have their own bathroom and everything.
And you did have a chance to look at the criteria?
Yes. I don't remember it all off the top of my head, though.
But you did, you did have a chance to review it.
Yes.
You feel you're going to meet it. I see that you did sign the affidavit, which is in the package.
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't believe so, no.
Any questions from the Board? I did notice that in your rendering, you have kind of what you were calling owner's side, so I assume part of the basement you're going to be retaining?
Yes. So, part of the basement where it has all like our furnace and all the heating stuff, electricity is blocked off, so they won't have access to it. That's just, it's a dividing door, blocks from both sides.
So, if there's nothing else, you can feel free to take a seat. There are two letters which I'm going to read into the record, one of which you could decide, you could rebut if you wish, but feel free to take a seat.
Thank you.
So, we received a email, a letter by way of email, from Joshua and Melissa Valier of 33 Elgin Street. This letter is in regard to the request of Brandon Rayome?
Rayome.
Rayome, of 36 Elgin Street. As neigh, I'm sorry, of 36 Elgin Street. As neighboring property owners, with less than 65 yards, within less than 65 yards of 36 Elgin Street, I have no reason to be opposed to the special exception from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 13. I hope Mr. Brandon Rayome is able to do whatever he wishes with his home on the land that he owns. We then received a email also from Rosie Lou, and it's as follows. Dear zoning/Board/Planning Department, I'm writing as a concerned resident, hold on a second. I'm writing as a concerned resident and homeowner that resides right off Elgin Street across from the property in regard to the application for a special exception under section 190-15, Table 15-1, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement of the home at 36 Elgin Street. Our neighborhood is a quiet, family-friendly area with many young children who regularly play outside and walk to nearby bus stops. We're proud of the safety and close-knit nature of our community, and we work hard to maintain its character. A few months ago, they had a random tenant living in their basement who just moved out about a month ago. It was a nightmare, especially since the tenant's car had an extremely loud muffler, and they were constantly coming and going at all hours of the night. What used to be a quiet and peaceful neighborhood no longer felt that way. We are concerned that allowing this in-law unit, especially if it is rented to unrelated persons, could bring unknown individuals into the area, which may impact the safety and character of our neighborhood. This proposal effectively introduces a multifamily dynamic into a single-family residential zone, and we feel this goes beyond the intent and spirit of our zoning rules. We respectfully ask the Board to deny this request for a special exception. While we understand the need for flexibility in housing, we believe such changes should be carefully balanced against the impact on neighbors and the long-term integrity of our residential community. We do plan on attending the hearing. Thank you for considering our concerns. Would you like to offer a rebuttal? You have up to five minutes.
I can start addressing the tenant. So, this was before I was aware that I had to rezone, so I do apologize. I do agree the car was very loud. I did try to address it multiple times. They stated it was a defect of the car as it got into an accident, and they're repaired. And, let's see what else they say. And going forward, if approved, I do plan on vetting the applicants better. I do admit, did a poor job with this one. But I believe that's it.
Any questions from the Board? All right, feel free to take a seat. All right, with that, we will bring it up to the Board for deliberations. Thoughts from the Board? Mr. Shaw?
I have no concerns. All the criteria appear to be met, and, yeah, I don't have any issue with the application.
Any other thoughts? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Boucher?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Brandon Rayome at 36 Elgin Street, Sheet A, Lot 449, requesting a special exception from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 3, to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit in the basement of the existing home. It's in the RA zone, Ward 7. We find that the requested use is listed in special exception in the use matrix code that I just stated in the advertisement. We find that the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. We find that the requested use will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system, or any other municipal system to which, in extent that the requested use, or any developed use in the immediate area, or in any other area in the city, will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. The applicant did, we did note that the applicant did sign the accessory dwelling unit after David, which is under land use code section 190-32, so that's been fulfilled and signed, agreed to. And we find that the requested use will not impair the integrity or be out of the character with the district or immediate neighborhood in which it is located, nor to be detrimental to the health, morals, or welfare of the residents of the city. So, again, with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Shaw. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor. Special exception request is approved unanimously. As you may or may not, or I didn't mention it, but as you may or may not know, there is a 30-day window of appeal, so during that time, you are free to proceed, but during that time, anybody may request a motion for, you know, file a motion for reconsideration. Good luck. So, the next case is the application of Kenneth and Liliana Markey, 48 Summer Street, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16E1 to exceed maximum driveway width. 18 feet existing on the east side of the property, 24 feet permitted, an extra 20-foot wide driveway proposed on the west side of the property for a total width of 38 feet. It's in the RB zone in Ward 3. And I am going to recuse myself from this case, so Mr. Neely will be taking over as Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maccara. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Why don't you step forward and state your name and address, and tell us in your own words what you're trying to do?
Sure. Ken Markey, 48 Summer Street. I'd like to add a driveway opening for two cars side by side for my tenants. I own an arcy pie, so there's like six cars, and there's tremendous amount of shuffling and parking in the street, and tickets by accident, you know? And it's, you know, pay 'em, but, you know? So, I'd like to do that because the tenants don't have their own spots, so we're constantly having to move each other's vehicles and things like that, so I'm looking for an additional 14 feet on top of the existing. Well, I should say I have 18 feet existing, but I'm asking for forgiveness of 14, because we allow 24 feet, correct?
Yeah.
So, I have 18 feet, so I'm looking for, on top of the six feet that I got left, I'm looking for an additional 14 feet to do the driveway on the left side of my property. And I'd be having Jack Chris do the tip downs and everything, and to the code and all that, so.
Okay. Great. Anything else you want to tell us?
Other than that, I, you know, I know you guys send things to my butters, so I did talk to the ones that are directly around me, because I've known them for the last 13 years, so I didn't have any negative feedback, at least from my direct people right around me.
Well, the good news is nobody here tonight, so there's a good chance you're not going to get any more negative feedback. That being said, is once you have presented everything you want to present, the folks up here on the stage get to ask you a couple of questions if they'd like to, so is there anything else you want to tell us before we start asking you some questions?
Not really. I'm a little lost for words when I can speak in public, so.
It's okay. We don't fight. We're very easy. We just want to hear what you're trying to do, and see if it matches up with what's going on in the neighborhood, and if it makes sense, so.
Yeah, I got, you know, like I said, it's a two-family. It's been like that, I don't know exactly how many years, but it's been there a long time as a two-family, and I'd like to provide my tenants their own parking. Things are too crowded in the other driveway where you bang indoors, or it's like. And being that I live there and own it, I'd like to make it nicer there, put a driveway there so people aren't all on the street. You know, there's enough parking on the street as it is right now, and trying to get around corners and stuff, it's a little, it's a little tough there. And as far as the character of the neighborhood, I mean, I got a neighbor, two houses down across the street that has two driveways, so. And there's a lot of driveways up around the corner and cross that are 50 feet wide. So, I mean, in the character of the neighborhood, I don't think it's going to affect it, and I think it would be more appealing than people doing curb hopping, you know? Driving over the curb and parking on the grass, I don't want that, so. Especially if I do move out and I have renters there, I don't, I don't want people arguing about spots and parking and stuff, seeing it's, you know, there's, in this case, is six cars, so. But other than that, that's about all I can think of right now, let's say.
Okay. We're going to ask if anybody has any questions up here for the applicant?
I did, but then the extra testimony answered, so.
All right. So, I do have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
So, you're right, when I drive through your neighborhood, there are some folks who have some super wide driveways. You know, we don't know if they've been permitted. We're not, we're not the permit police up here.
Right, right.
That being said, I think my first real question is, you talked, it's a, your building is a two-unit, correct?
Correct.
How many total bedrooms in each unit?
There's two, two, there's two upstairs and two downstairs.
So, four bedrooms to, okay. And your testimonies right now that you guys have, or your group, the group living in this building all has a total of about six cars? Look like a six-to-eight car driveway, six?
Yeah, I mean, you can, one behind the other, three and three, without any too much problem. And I have a box van, I'm an electrician, so I have that, a pickup truck, my wife's car. The tenants have two, and I will be getting another one.
So, if you just widened your current driveway, would that alleviate the problem? Like, why do a whole second one?
Well, I can't, well, because of the way it is right there, I mean, I probably could, but I, I don't know if I want to infringe on the front yard, more or less. It's going to suck up like the whole front of the house. I think it'd look better with, you know, on each side, I got two sidewalks there, front door for the top unit, and then the, my door on the right, so I think it would just be more, I don't think it'd be too much, I think it's just too much pavement all in one spot for me. I think it'd look more appealing and nicer with two separate ones, and they're on this side, I'm on that side, kind of like, you know, the duplex, if you'd say, but it's not a, it's not like they're side by side, it's over and under, but.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Why don't you have a seat? We do have one letter that we're going to read into the record. And this was received on Friday, May 16th, looks like, from Eric Bosta. Dear Madam or Sir, this is about the notice of public hearing case number two that we received by postal mail regarding Kenneth and Liliana Markey, who live at 48 Summer Street in Nashua. The notice mentioned they want to add driveway space to their property. My name is Eric Bosta, my wife Joan Bosta, and I own the house at 47 Summer Street in Nashua. We live directly across the street from Kenneth, Ken, and Liliana, Lily, Markey. We have known them for many, many years. They are honest, hardworking people and close friends of ours. They also have been great caretakers of the property for as long as they have owned it. We are more than happy to have Ken and Lily add driveway space to their property. As of right now, their house includes a one-tenant apartment. In order to park all of their cars, they have to move the cars around in the one existing driveway with their cars and their tenants' cars. Sometimes, they would have to leave a car or cars on street parking for a while until they could reposition them into that single driveway. Ken and Lily having additional driveway space would alleviate the moving around of cars, and would be an overall benefit to them and their tenants' living situation. Please allow Ken and Lily to add additional driveway space to their property. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Thank you, Eric Bosta. We do not have any letters in opposition, therefore, we won't have you come back up to rebut. That was a very nice letter in your, in your favor. So, that being said, I'm going to close the public meeting and open the public hearing, and hear what the Board would like to discuss. Yes, Mr. Boucher?
Taking a look around the neighborhood, obviously, right on Jefferson Street, where the applicant's home is, I didn't see too many wide driveways until you started looking on Jeff, I mean, on, I said Jefferson, correct, on Summer Street. But the minute you go to the next street over, to Jefferson, you go to Salem Street, as the applicant said, on Toll Street, there are more, there's about at least a dozen examples that I saw with wider, wider driveways. So, this is, I would say, in my estimation, is, is part of what the character of the neighborhood is, is, this is what's needed. There's a, again, looking, and really looking at it again, you know, you see there's multi-families. There's two families, there's some four families, so I think, for me, it's a reasonable request. I did do the same thing. I looked at, you know, the whole widening on one side, but I can see where practically for function and how everything would flow, I think, again, you know, it's just my personal opinion, I believe that the driveway on the left is more reasonable, you know, as far as what the tenants, what the applicant's trying to do. So, I'm going to support the application for those reasons.
All right, thank you. Mr. Patry, Mr. Shaw, any comments? Mr. Shaw?
So, I actually appreciated the testimony about, you know, it wasn't, this term wasn't used, but I think if the applicant was to go the extra wide driveway just on the right in the existing area, I think you'd end up possibly having more of that like parking lot effect, whereas by splitting up into two driveways, I think visually, aesthetically, I think that's more appealing, generally speaking. The other thing is, you know, if you actually also note that, you know, I have to go back to the other, so you've got, yes, Salem Street there that's coming basically straight at the property, and so in one sense, you already kind of, by actually keeping, by keeping extra driveway width to the left side of the property, you're also keeping that driveway a little bit more out of the intersection. Now, granted, it's only a three-way intersection, so it's probably not as much of a concern like it could be in some other instances, but there's just, I think, a few little things like that that, to me, make it reasonable to do the two driveways. And the total width, I think, would be necess, the over, some overage, whether it was, it would have to probably be at least a total of 32 feet or something like that to accommodate three car widths. I don't, I don't know what the, you know, the best math there is, but generally, I think it's probably have to be something close to that. So, I think there would be an overage no matter what, whether it was one really wide driveway, or by going to two, you know, two separate driveways. And I think the depth isn't necessarily readily available to put, or without pushing it way over to the property line, perhaps, and then, and there's a little bit less functionality, perhaps, by having two cars stacked in a single wide driveway versus the two side by side that's proposed. So, kind of for all those reasons, I feel comfortable with this. I think, and Mr. Boucher already went through the fact that there's a lot of other, a lot of other driveways of, you know, extra width and, or double driveways. The applicant also noted that as well, so I am in support.
Thank you. So, I had, based on the packet, I had come into this leaning not in support for a couple of reasons, and I'll get to where I ended up here in just a second here, but some of the criteria that I usually look at when we hear these driveway requests to widen the driveways are, is there an imminent safety issue? And one could argue that with Salem Street, not a very busy street, but I understand that having the current driveway kind of offset a little bit, and adding a second one over there could, could be looked at in a, in a safety manner. Also, looking at the front of the house, I mean, it's a nice-looking house. I actually personally think a second driveway's not going to make it look as great, but it's not, it's not my house to make that call. And then, in the packet, it had been noted that they were looking for parking for friends and family, and I usually don't look very kindly on that, because I can't think of any places I go where somebody builds a driveway so I can come visit. It just doesn't happen. You know, so that being said, you know, it's not like the Zamher Street or one of the main thoroughfares where you're afraid of people parking on, on the side of the street. That being said, once the applicant discussed, and it's really, that's why I asked, how many bedrooms are in this house? You know, were we looking at a one-bedroom with one person, and all of a sudden, we have, you know, one group with five cars and one with one, but realistically, we're looking at two, two bedrooms. So, in this area, it is normal to have parking, you know, six cars, especially when I hear there's a work truck, is normal. I mean, that's what we do in the Northeast here. So, so, basically, the applicant, his testimony took away my concerns of what was in the packet. So, for those reasons, I am going to be in favor of this, this application here tonight. Does anybody want to make a motion? Patry, thank you for volunteering.
I move that we approve the request of Kenneth and Liliana Markey, requesting a variance from land use code section 190-16E1 to exceed the maximum driveway width, 18 feet existing on the east side of the property, 24 feet permitted, an extra 20-foot wide driveway proposed on the west side of the property for a total width of 38 feet. We find that granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the extra wide driveway would be in character, keeping in character with the neighborhood, and would not be unusual for a home in that neighborhood. We find that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed by granting the variance because of the benefit to the homeowner and the other occupants in the property. There's been, we find that granting the variance would do substantial justice because it adds to the use of the property for the homeowner and the other occupants, and does not have any negative impact on the neighborhood or surrounding properties or the, the street. We've had no testimony that the values of the surrounding properties would be diminished, none that, or any testimony that they would be increased, so I, there's no testimony in factor four. And we find that the applicant would have unnecessary hardship if the variance were denied because of the neighborhood, the size of the property, and the number of folks living in the property. And we find that there's, there's not a fair substantial relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and denying the application because, again, the size of the property and the, the use of the neighborhood, and we find that the proposed use is reasonable, given the character of the neighborhood and the use of the property and the access for the occupants. So, for those reasons, I move that we approve the request.
Thank you, Mr. Patry. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw, for a second. And do we have any additional discussion on this before we vote? Yes, Mr. Shaw?
And it doesn't need to be in the motion, but just then, it was, we had to, you know, talked about it, or some of our comments prior, but I think just also, for the record, that we felt that there is some safety benefits to, to the intersecting street, and I don't think we specifically said it in that discussion, but it came up in testimony, but it also, there will be some benefit to keeping less cars from needing to be parked on the street, and that's an area where I think that's overall beneficial for general safety reasons, so just wanted to have that in there also.
I agree. I think we should have that in there. Mr. Patry, if you're okay with that?
Yeah, what's amend the motion to add, that granting the variance would do substantial justice because of an increase to public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Patry. And I assume you'd like to second that? Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor? All right, your motion did pass, four to nothing. There is a 30-day window of appeal. What will happen is the folks, if, if somebody were to appeal, and there's a low chance of that, they'll go to Mr. Fox's office, he'll let you know. That being said, feel free to start your project, and if something comes up, he will let you know. Otherwise, thank you very much, and congratulations.
You too, you too. That takes us to reviewing the upcoming agenda. Did everybody have a chance to take a look at the agenda?
Yes.
Did anybody see anything of regional impact?
Yeah.
I did not either. So, that takes us to the minutes. We had a chance to review the minutes.
Yes.
Any comments, any changes?
I did not have any changes.
Wow. Okay.
I also did not notice anything, so.
I did not either. Anybody else?
I literally noticed something so small that I'm not going to. I literally noticed something so small that I'm not going to.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Okay, with that, can we, can I get a motion to approve the minutes of May 13th?
So move?
Mr. Shaw, second?
Seconded by Mr. Neely. All in favor?
Thank you. Okay, and I believe that is all of our business for this evening. Unless there's anything anybody else wishes to raise. Excellent. See everybody in June.
All right.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Patri. All in favor?
Shaw, are we right on the nose?